All right, good to go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April two thousand twenty-two meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals in Brighton. Thank you for joining us in the Zoom format. Just quickly, just let me know, let me know. Let I'll let you know how we're gonna operate this meeting tonight. So we have twelve cases to hear tonight. And when you hear your case called, if you could identify yourself with the hand raise or function there, then we will let you come in to speak. And, you know, please tell us why you feel that we should approve your application, any relevant facts. We'll have your if there's a drawing that's appropriate, then it'll be put up so everybody can see it. So then the board members will ask you questions if they have any. And then, once we finish that, then we ask if there's anybody on the call that would like to speak regarding your application. And if there are, they will. And if there aren't, then we'll close the public area and move on to the next application. Once we finish all of them, it might take a couple minute break. And then we'll come back and deliberate and you can listen to the deliberation. We vote on them tonight. Unless something was to be tabled for some reason. Then you can hang around and listen, or tomorrow you could call Rick DiStefano in the building office at the town hall, and he would let you know what the result of your application was. Okay, so at this point, then we'd like to call this meeting to order. Rick, was the meeting properly advertised?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it was advertised in the March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two edition of the Daily Record.
Okay, thank you. And could you please call the roll?
Primo.
Here.
The Schwartz.
Here.
Is Tompkins right?
Yeah.
Mr. DiAgusti.
Here.
Mr. Mites.
Here.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Here.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Here.
Please let the record show all members are present.
Okay, so just briefly here, we have our new member of the zoning board for his first meeting tonight. He'll be listening, observing, whatever. Name is Matt DiAgusti. And Matt, would you like to just give us a quick little intro on yourself?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Matthew Augustine. I've been a Brighton resident since two thousand eleven. I live over on Hollywood Avenue in Meadowbrook. I have a wife and daughter that are here, living with me. And I'm a high school teacher. I've been teaching in the Hilton Central School District since two thousand and three. And I teach economics, government, and United States history.
Very good. We appreciate you joining us.
Thank you for having me.
It's nice to have a full compliment. So, thank you. And, you know, anything we can do to help you out, we we will be happy to do so. Okay? All right, so at this point, Rick, is there anything you would like to tell us about tonight's agenda?
I did send over a communications from the Fire Marshal. I hope everybody has that and has had a chance to read it regarding the couple of the applications. Besides that, I have nothing else. Do any members have any questions regarding any of the applications?
Okay. Very good. Well, and at this point, then, let's roll. Whenever you're ready, Rick.
Can I do the minutes?
Oh, geez, yeah. I always try to forget those. Yes, we have two minutes. We have January and February. Are there any comments about the January minutes? From anybody? Well, that's great. Those are definitely the briefer of the two. Okay, that's a clear one. So, okay, so can we get a motion for those minutes, January?
I will.
Thank you, Heather. And a second? Ted, okay.
The motion is to approve the January minutes. Mr. Primo?
Yes.
The Schwartz.
Abstain.
Is Tompkins right?
Yes.
Mr. DiAgusti.
DiAgusti.
DiAgusti, I'm sorry.
Abstain.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
The motion to approve the minutes carries.
Okay, great. Okay. All right, Judy, how about February, the Bible according to Orc?
Okay. Page seventeen, line twenty-two, it should be just merely on page nineteen, line twenty-four, it should read which are yet. So the second and third words are are yet on page twenty. Line three, you might want to take a look at this with me. I think it should be which is also expiring or which also expired. Planning Board to request the site plan approval, which, but again, absolutely, it's changed. Oh, which is expiring, it should read, which is expiring. Okay. On page twenty-six, line seventeen, the second word should be stick, S.T.I.C.K. Page thirty. Line eight. I think there's an extra word. It says the sitting area, bath bedroom. So I would say delete the word three. Page. Forty-seven, line twenty-one, the first word should be plans, P.L.A.N.S. Page sixty-eight, line twelve, middle of the sentence, it should be compared. Page seventy-two, line nineteen, insert the word two after going. And in line twenty, insert the word two after only on page seventy-eight, line twenty-one, the first word is understanding. And I think my last one. I'm getting there. Page one twenty-four. Line two, the second word, the second word in the sentence, you said it should be got, we got. And I think that's all I have. Yeah.
Okay, does anyone else have anything else for the February minutes? Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome.
And how about a motion?
I'll move to approve with the modification.
Second.
Right. Second by Andrea, okay.
Motion is to approve with corrections, Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Is Tompkins right?
Yes.
Mr. DiAgusti? Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury? Heather?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries. I'm sorry, with corrections.
Correct. Okay, very good. So whenever you're ready, Rick, you can read the first page.
Application for A oh one twenty-two, application Anthony and Tasha Gattella, owner of property located three twenty Warrington Drive for an area variance in section two oh three dash two point one B three and two oh three dash nine eight four to allow for detached garage to be constructed two point five feet from a rear lot line and two point four feet from a side lot line, move the minimum five foot setback from all outlines as required by code. Also, grab an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
Anthony Gattella. My wife, Tasha, is on the Zoom call as well.
Wonderful. Okay, so whenever you folks are ready, go go right ahead.
Sure. So as you can see by the plan, we're just looking to incorporate. This garage is ninety-plus years old. It is racked. The concrete floor is beyond repair. I've had a couple people come out and look at it and tell me it's it's not salvageable. And then the cost to raise the garage and pour a new floor is gonna is in the same ballpark of building a new one. So the thought is to use the existing footprint of the garage and the shed, move it up, you know, three feet up the driveway. Now give us the allowable six hundred square feet as per Brighton code and make it all one uniform structure. We do have architectural drawings now, which demonstrate right along the lines of my original draft out drawings that it looks, you know, very similar on the three sides, both facing the street and the neighboring properties in within our fence line is where it would be different. But it would be one structure as opposed to two very different structures as it is now.
Okay, can you talk about the neighboring properties and the what's what's there on the site?
Sure. To the east, there's a there's a three-foot fence that extends past the start of the original garage. Beyond that is a rock pile presumed from when they probably dug out this garage, that just has overgrown vegetation along it. On the backside, we have ground cover and a load of trees along that entire fence line and the rear of the garage. I had spoke to all the neighbors surrounding, showed them the plans, and they had had no objections.
Okay, very good. And you did include a sketch. So I will presume that the materials will somewhat match the house and our garage?
Yeah, we're looking to match the siding. And instead, right now, there's two single wood garage doors, which are severely rotted. We're gonna do a single garage door. Traditional sixteen-by-seven door. The 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 street facing side is gonna be pretty much the same. I'm only looking to extend a half a foot on the front. It's gonna have a gable end, again, with the siding matching the house.
And you noted that you might be adding some additional landscaping? Is that what we?
Additional landscaping, no.
Okay, nothing else other than the vegetation that we saw right there on the property. Okay.
Yeah, the vegetation that's there is that's the, you know, that's on my neighbor's property. So I, that's not mine to do. There's just dirt along that that rock pile and my garage.
Okay. Okay, so questions by the board members other than mine? Anything else?
No, sir. I do have the architectural drawings. If you would like me to present them, I hold them up so I don't kind of see.
Would you guys like to see them? I know they're included in the packet.
There was just sketch drawings of mine, just to get on the variance board. But now I have an architect, because I'm working with one to facilitate this.
Our basic concern is generally the style and, you know, your comment about making it somewhat harmonious with the building that's already on the property, so.
Yeah, my goal is to is to reuse some of the siding that I can and then buy matching siding to keep it as uniform. Just want to use the allowable space. So I can, you know, we can utilize it, park in it, store stuff in it.
Okay.
And make it good for the next ninety years.
Okay, sounds good. All right. Any other questions by the board members?
And just to confirm it, it's not any closer to any lot line than the garage that is there now, that's being removed.
No, ma'am. Right now, the current minimum variance, the garage is kind of tweaked a little bit, so it ranges from two point four to two point seven. My architect has it drawn out at two point five all the way around. So it's actually gonna be a smidge less, but I met the variance based on the smallest part of the current garage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other questions? Okay, at this point, then, is there anyone on the Zoom call that would like to speak regarding three twenty Warrington? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is enclosed, excuse me, is closed. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Application for A oh two twenty-two, application about additive solutions incorporated, Leesay, and the Head Energy Corporation, owner of property located at two eighty-five Metro Park for temporary revocable use permit pursuant to section two nineteen dash four, to allow for to allow for a storage trailer on site for a period of nine to twelve months. We're not allowed by code. Also, just got an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
Jeff, for you?
Yeah, I see him there. Yeah.
Okay.
Hi, Jeff, are you gonna be speaking?
He's unmuted, but.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
That was. No, that's me. I was saying he's unmuted, but you might be having technical issues or something, because I don't see actual sound coming through.
Oh, I see, Brendan, okay. Maybe you could try to, Jeff, maybe you can try to unmute and or mute and unmute again, see.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, we're good.
All set?
Lose it again? Can you hear me?
Now.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm not sure really what happened.
All right. Just please give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Sure, my name is Jeff Royce. I am actually based out of Evol's headquarters in Minneapolis, Minnesota. This facility that we would like to add a trailer is at address two eighty-five Metro Park.
Okay, so please proceed, that's.
So what we would like to do is we're outgrowing our space at two eighty-five Metro Park. And we still have a few years left on our lease, so we're going to actually find another location and actually have two locations in the area. But until we find that other location, we need some temporary storage to store equipment parts that that will go to the new location. And it would likely be more in the three-to-six-month range rather than the nine-to-twelve-month range.
Can you just, for the board members, maybe explain what this operation does?
Sure. So we're headquartered out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. We build additive manufacturing equipment, betterly, more commonly known as three D printing equipment. So we build the equipment in Minneapolis, but our location out in Rochester does our materials development. They basically figure out how to compound all the little plastic dust that goes into our machine happens right there at two eighty-five Metro Park. So they're testing materials and developing materials at that location.
Okay, so is there actually manufacturing there, or is it more research or testing or?
It's it's all research and development. There is no manufacturing that takes place at that location.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I don't I don't believe so.
Okay.
Dennis, this is Primo. I have some questions.
Sure, go right ahead, Ed.
Yes, Mr. Royce. I understand from the application, there won't be any storage of hazardous materials in the trailer?
That is correct. It's it's going to be old fixtures that, you know, might be used in the future. It's all mechanical. There's no electronics. There's no, none of the, none of the plastics that we actually do development on. There will, there won't be any of that. It's just old machine parts.
Right, so your company would be agreeable that a condition is no storage of hazardous materials?
Correct.
Okay, when I was out there, there appeared to be, maybe it was four large round. They almost looked like tanks or whatever.
Yes.
And in what are, are those going to be removed?
No, those tanks remain. The trailer would sit just up front from those tanks. Those tanks are used by the other tenant in the building. I'm not, I'm not even sure what they they use those tanks for.
Okay, so because I think the tanks, when I looked at them, seemed to be where you're showing the trailer would be.
So I think the tanks are, so the trailer is in the parking lot. The tanks, I believe, are, you know, north of the trailer.
Okay, but so there's going to be the trailer and those tanks will all be there.
Yes.
And it appeared to me when I was out there that you did have lots of parking space. Is there any concerns about losing parking there?
No, no, we've 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 got plenty of parking space. So does the the new tenant that is also in that building. They have plenty of parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Royce.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions by the board members? Okay, very good. All right, at this point, is there anyone on this call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Royce.
Application for A oh three twenty-two, application of the Country Club of Rochester, owner of property located at twenty-nine thirty-five East Avenue for temporary revocable use permit pursuant to section two nineteen dash four, to erect a tent and hold up the six outdoor weddings slash club of special events for the year two thousand twenty-two. Also, just got an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for CCR?
This is Amy Girdley Comer from the Country Club of Rochester.
Okay, Amy, what is your address for the record, please?
Two nine three five East Avenue.
Okay, great. Please go ahead.
Um, so essentially, this is an application, just like we did last year, for any of the weddings or outdoor events that have tents. Each event would have its own permit where we do submit the actual tent that'll be erected, and then the fire marshal does come out and inspect them as well.
Okay, very good. All right. Questions, I guess. This is something we acted on before.
Right, remember Judy, has Rick, has anything changed really substantially from last year's application, would you say?
No, nothing. Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. You can go ahead, because I don't know. So, you know, please answer that question.
Okay, Amy, then I ask you, has anything changed substantially from last year?
Nothing has changed.
Okay, Rick, do I recall that there was a letter, though, from the Fire Marshal regarding the placement of the tent? Wasn't there some concern about that? That it was too.
There is a, there is a letter that was sent over to you yesterday's packet with with some some typical concerns that the Fire Marshal has for tents in general. So, you know, please take a look at that. I don't think he was awfully concerned with its location.
Okay. All right.
Well, actually, Rick, this is Town Attorney Kent Gordon. I'm looking at the letter. Thanks for making sure I had it. I appreciate it. The Fire Marshal has expressed some specific concerns about this particular user erecting tents. And has said that past installations of temporary structures were erected too close to the permanent building, resulting in the structure creating a building egress and fire separation concern. And that the Fire Marshal has suggested several times to management that a couple of basic setup plans be provided, that the Fire Marshal be allowed to approve the location, anchoring, and placement, which they could then provide for those who are setting up for the special events and would assist their staff, as they'll have a better understanding of approved placements for this temporary structure. So, so I do think there are some specific concerns that Fire Marshal Roth has expressed with with regard to CCR's past practice. And so I just asked the representative from CCR, having heard those concerns, is CCR willing to accept a condition on the approval of the temporary and revocable to follow the Fire Marshal's recommendations and review with the Fire Marshal a couple of basic setup plans and anchoring and placement plans so that we would avoid having conflict between building egress and fire separation issues in the future?
Yeah, I would be happy to work on that and get that over and work with them. We have talked about setting up a meeting. And this this came up in the fall to start thinking about concepts for that.
Okay. This member write that Fire Marshal letter also indicates prohibition of gas-fired pedestal heaters. I just wanted to confirm that the applicants also find that being a condition of approval that only portable forced air heating units will be permitted for heating them.
Because I haven't seen the letter that the Fire Marshal sent over, and this is the first time hearing of that. You know, I do know there's many other locations that do use portable gas heaters. This is the first that I've heard that this would be a condition of the application.
Why, I I think, based on, and again, I I recognize that that's not fair. I do think this letter was just sent yesterday, so it's it's hard to explain with the the letter without you being able to see it in front of you. But it does note that those portable gas-fired pedestal heaters and other propane appliances are prohibited by the Fire Code of New York State. So I would assume that they should be prohibited, you know, under all tents in New York, not just for this application.
Yeah. I think the issue is, go ahead, go ahead.
My apologies, but he has spoken with us in the past and just said he doesn't recommend them, but he's never prohibited us from having them. So that concerns me that now this is a part of this application, because he's actually seen them, and we've talked about future plans, and he's never mentioned that they should be removed even.
Okay, well, it's kind, it's kind of hard, you know, for us to negotiate for Mr. Roth, you know, on this thing or make clarification. So why don't we, let's continue with the questions, and then we can discuss this in the deliberation and how we might want to handle it, okay?
Okay, I can promise that for any tent, they would never have these heaters under them.
Okay, all right. So, board members, more questions for Amy?
Amy, what's your typical ending time for these outdoor events?
They can never exceed our sound ordinance, so I believe that is eleven PM.
Thank you.
And Ms. Comer, when do you anticipate that the first outdoor event of the season will take place at CCR?
Yes, the first outdoor event is actually the last Saturday in April, and then there's not another one until the last Friday in May.
Okay. All right, other questions by the board members? Okay. Very good. Is there anyone on this call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application for A oh four twenty-two, application of Bril Messina, agent and Ralph DiTucci, Castle Office Group, LLC, owner of property located at one eighty Sawgrass Drive for temporary revocable use permit pursuant to section two nineteen dash four, allow food truck on site once per week from May through August two thousand twenty-two. We're not allowed by code. Also, grab an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
Hi, I'm Brielle.
Okay, bro, just give us your full name and address, please.
Brielle Messina. It's one eighty Sawgrass Drive.
Okay, go right ahead.
We had a food truck last year, and it worked out really well, so we just wanted to do it again. We did add one month to it because we were able to get the application in earlier this year. But, yeah, it worked out really well. We didn't have any issues with parking or garbage or any issues with the trucks at all, the all of our. um, any issues with the trucks at all. The, uh, all of our staff was able to use it. And then there were two other buildings next door that are also, um, URM C buildings and they were able to use it too. And I think they got a lot of business, so. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Very good. Uh, questions by the board members about this?
Obviously no complaints from the last year, um, either on trash issues in the parking lot or anything like that. Nope.
Oh.
Thanks.
Okay.
Do you use the same vendor each time or do you rotate vendors?
Uh, we rotate them. There's a handful of them that we reached out to and they will pick a couple of dates. And book those. So it's been a different one every, every day.
And do you know whether these food trucks are all properly licensed to the city of Rochester?
Yeah, we've only been, um, getting the ones that are properly licensed.
Very good. Very good. Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Application for A O five twenty-two, application of Dwayne and Brenda Smullen, owners of property located at fifty-five Middle Brook Lane. For an area variance from section two oh five dash two to our front porch to extend five feet into the forty foot front setback required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
Uh, this is Brenda Smullen and I'm here with my husband, Dwayne.
Okay, and your address for the record?
Our address is fifty-five Middle Brook Lane.
Okay, great. All right, so please proceed.
Okay, so we've been a resident of Brighton now for over forty years. And what we'd like to do is add a porch to the front of our house. However, to get an appropriate depth to allow for seating such as rocking chairs and/or gliders. And still allow room for someone to walk by those seated, we'd like it to be eight feet in depth. Uh, currently the house sets back approximately forty-three feet from the right away. So we would need approximately an additional five feet to allow for the eight foot depth of the porch. Um, we feel the addition of the porch will enhance the usability of our front door. Which currently is open to the elements. Anyone visiting or packages being left are currently out in the rain and the snow. We don't have any roof or anything over where the front door is. Um, this will be an open porch with posts and rail construction, thus having minimal obstruction to the view of our neighbors on either side. Um, it would allow us space in front of the house to sit and meet and greet our neighbors as they walk by with the kids and the dogs. And giving us an opportunity to connect with those, with others in the neighborhood. Um, our neighbor across the street has a porch of similar construction. It was built in twenty nineteen. And it truly does add to the curb appeal of the home. So we feel this would enhance the curb appeal of our home as well, we're hoping. Uh, the neighborhood consists of many different style homes and roof designs. We're, we're nowhere, uh, we're not a cookie cutter neighborhood. The houses and roof designs are all different. Um, we were a part of the ar- architectural review board meeting on March twenty-second. However, our application was tabled to include some recommendations for us to consider. After considering, after consideration of those recommendations. We are going to be resubmitting a revised plan at the next ARB meeting on April twenty-sixth. The revisions we've made were to change the hip roof pitch from a four twelve and eight twelve to a three twelve and six twelve. That'll add some more height to the look at the porch. As well as reducing the length of the porch to bring it in a bit, so it's more aligned better with the front of the two-story section where it's going to be located. Um, we've shown the drawings to our neighbors who will be looking at this all the time and none had any objections to the look. Uh, actually, they're all looking forward to joining us in the rocking chairs. So, we, thank you for your time and consideration of our requests.
Okay, so questions by the board members, please?
This is member right, um, just, uh, to make sure it's on the record. Uh, the home basically directly across from you also has that porch and that porch also extends into the front yard setback.
Yes, yes, they also had to get a variance.
Yeah.
Theirs is eight foot deep, which is what we were looking at too. We actually did quite a bit of measuring of their porch over there. Just to see what, uh, what was acceptable.
And there are a couple of other, um, similar porches in that neighborhood as well and into that one across the street from you.
Right. Yes, um, there was one that was just constructed just down at the end of Middlebrook. The house actually faces Vienna wood. Uh, so that one just got finished. Well, about a month ago, maybe. Uh, and then there is another one over on, uh, let's see if I'm going to get the right street. Sleepy High Hollow, they have almost like a wraparound porch there, which is really nice.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, go ahead, Kathleen.
And, and just to clarify, the application says it's an open porch. It won't be screened, is that correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Very good. Other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak relating to this application? Okay, there being none on the public hearing.
And if you close that, correct?
Yeah, I did. I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, yep, all set, closed.
Application for A O six twenty-two, application Jeffrey Gardner, owner of property located at forty-five Null Top Drive. For extension of an approved area variance, allowing for a garage addition to extend six plus or minus feet into the forty foot front setback required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
Good evening. My name's Jeffrey Gardner. Uh, I live at forty-five Null Top Drive.
Okay, very good, Jeff. Go right ahead.
Yeah, and I'm just representing, um, the variance that I got a year ago. Um, since then, obviously COVID and everything else has happened, but I've also in the last year engaged the services of an architect to assist in kind of challenging and kind of coming up with a better footprint and floor plan. And he basically came up with pretty much the same concept that was originally presented to the board. Um, which is that we would have a four-foot ex- uh, extension into the front right away. I think it's described as four or six plus or minus, but really the footprint on the foundation is four feet. Um, other than that, there's been no changes, um, except I've submitted bid, bid drawings with this package. Versus the original conceptual drawings we did a year ago.
Uh, Jeff, just for clarification, that four feet, there is a two-foot overhang, correct?
Yeah, yeah, two-foot overhang, but I'm, for, for furnished space is only going to be four feet.
That, that's just why, that, why it was advertised as six feet. It's really take it to the closest point, which included the overhang.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so materially, then no other changes were made to the look of it or anything like that?
No.
Okay, and you're planning to proceed, obviously?
Yeah, yep.
Okay. All right, board members, questions?
Uh, this is member McKay Drury. I wanted to just make sure that I'm understanding the, um, application form correctly. So, um, the way it's written up is the, I see that there's like, it says revision one, and then you're indicating you're resubmitting, uh, to extend it for another year. And then it says revision zero. Is revision zero what was in your original application?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I left all that for reference material.
Okay, great.
Okay, other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone on this call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public hearing is closed.
Application for A O seven twenty-two, application of Vincent and Kimberly Nolan, owners of property located at eighty-one Indian Spring Lane. For an area variance from section two oh three dash two point one B six. To allow a standby emergency generator to be located in a side yard and move the rear yard behind the house as required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this, please?
Hi, good evening, Dennis. It's been Nolan calling. I'm the, uh, homeowner here at eighty-one Indian Spring Lane.
Okay, great. All right, Ben, go right ahead.
Well, thank you. And, um, I think this is a pretty simple one here. We had, um, previous owners of the house had put some additions on it at different points over the years and somehow managed to box in the rear of the, uh, home from any access to the utilities, uh, in the basement. So I'm working with Isaac HVAC, um, to figure out how to put the generator in and is, uh, it's possible to get it in on the side of the house and we would locate it as far deep back from the road as possible. Uh, to still be able to access the utilities. It would be, uh, about a hundred and thirty-five feet from the road and seventy feet from, uh, any neighbor. And, um, we would, as part of our variance here, we would certainly, um, landscape that in with some evergreen style, uh, boxwoods or something along those lines that the deer aren't going to eat up. And, uh, keep it from being seen. You know, it's only, um, about twenty-eight inches tall. And, uh, it's really going to be, uh, blending right in with whatever plantings are there and any air conditioner on the side of the house anyhow.
Okay, can you just describe for the record just how far to the nearest structure that would be?
Yeah, it's about seventy feet, uh, to the next structure, uh, not our property. And of course, we're not looking for any variance from, uh, the fire safety there. It'll still be six feet from the house is, uh, required.
Okay, and then it's sitting how far from the street?
It'd be about a hundred and thirty-five feet from the road.
Okay, great. And we'll presume that the unit that you've selected through Isaac then meets the town's requirements on the decibel rating, et cetera?
Oh, certainly.
Do you know what that is for the record?
Uh, I could find that for you. I had it, uh, when I was doing all of this work. Uh, Mike Atkins from Isaac may be on the line here, but, uh, I, I believe that it was, uh, in the sixty sixties range of decibels off the top of my head, which is, uh, pretty darn quiet.
Yeah, Dennis, I just looked it up. It's at sixty-seven according to their spec sheet that they submitted.
Well, that's great. I knew there was notation in the paperwork, but, okay. All right, um, very good. So, board members, any other questions about this application?
Vince, did you talk to your neighbor in regards to it?
Uh, actually, they're in Florida for the winter.
Okay. All righty, so no other questions? That's great. Thanks, Vince. Uh, right, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Application for A O eight twenty-two, application of James and Karen Coffey, owners of property located at thirty-six Midland Avenue. For an area variance from sections two oh three dash one point one B eight. To allow standby emergency generator to be located six inches from a rear lot line and nine feet from a side lot line and move them in a ten-foot setback required by code. I'll subscribe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
Hi, I'm Jim Coffey. My wife Karen is here with me and we live at thirty-six Midland Avenue. We've been there since nineteen eighty-four. Hope to live out our days there, but we've recently converted from a septic system to a, um, a grinder system. Is everyone familiar with that?
Um, why, why don't you give a quick?
Okay, instead of everything going into a septic tank, this goes into a tank that's buried that has an incredible grinder to it, grinds everything up. And sends it underground through a little inch and a half pipe, actually up to the next street, which is Willard Avenue. Um, and so that though it needs electricity. And so we're, we're applying for a variance to put in a whole house generator in the back. And I need to actually change what you see in front of you there because I put in the application before we had the final, um, estimate. And what's recommended now is that, see how the, how the, um, thing sticks out perpendicular to the back line? Uh, we actually need it to be, um, horizontal to that line. And it has to be in eighteen inches in for UL code in from the, uh, from the lot line. So, um, so to the north, you can see how close our house is, just four and a half feet. So we would want to put the generator five feet in, which would place it behind the house at that end of it. And then, um, um, so we would need a variance of five feet there. And if we were eighteen inches in, the, the code is ten feet. So it would be the difference between those two. Um, apparently one side of the, the generator is an intake and the other side is an exhaust. And so it didn't make sense to have one, you know, have it perpendicular to the fence.
Okay, so. Okay. Just, I just want to clarify, it's not a gem. So you're modifying your application to be five plus or minus feet from the north property line?
Yes.
And, uh, one point, one point five feet from the, uh, east property line, not six inches, correct?
That's correct. Yes, thank you.
Uh, board members, you understand, you have that? One point five from that rear property line and five.
The rear property, Rick, this is Ed Primo, the rear property line east.
Yes.
The other property line is north, right?
Side property line is north, correct?
Yeah, where the word sidewalk is, yep.
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 And then on the drawing that we're looking at here, uh, will the, um, rectangle then be turned ninety degrees?
Yeah. Yeah, so that, because it's four feet long and two feet wide, so the four feet would be, uh, horizontal to the property line.
Okay, all right. So questions for the applicant?
Um, Mr. Coffey, this is Ed Primo. I saw you the other day.
Oh, yeah. Hey, Ed.
Um, so this area is all enclosed by the, uh, the fence, right, the wood, uh,
A wooden fence, yeah.
Right. And this is a house that was built in, what was it, nineteen twenty-nine?
Yes, sir.
And this is kind of a pre-existing, uh, kind of placement of this lot.
Yeah.
A pre-existing, non-conforming, but.
You know, a few years ago, in fact, we were talking about that, um, you have to, you, you have to be at ten percent of the width of your property line. And no, ours was a four hu- forty foot, so we had to be four feet. Anyways, when we combined lots, it wound up being two hundred feet and ten percent of that was twenty feet. So we needed to get a variance, um, to combine our lots.
Right, I remember, I remember that variance.
Okay.
Um, so when you do this, you will now have a connection to, uh, public sewers, correct?
Yes, sir. Up on Willard.
And then, uh, you will not have to, uh, have your septic system. You'll be able to close that, right?
It's already closed, yeah. That's, we're hoping to build an addition, uh, and that's the only place we could do it was where the leach field is. So.
Okay, yes.
Pardon?
Um, I was just going to say so that the addition would be going south. That's where you have the additional property?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Other questions?
Yeah, I'm just for the record, could you just explain what is behind your house?
Well, um, it's, it's another lot. There's a guy, been a guy living back there since, I think, since, since right after we've been there, but he, he's been living in his car. He died a few months ago and, uh, he's got a little tiny house that's condemned. I mean, the roof is falling in. And, um, um, it's just very wet, you know?
The property's on the market.
It's on the market now, you know, as a building lot. Um, but it's, it's, it's been a wreck for a while.
And that's to the eagle, that's to the rear.
Yep. And that lot, because, um, um, that lot of two, uh, three out of the four sides to it is, is Persimmon Park. And that probably will be the big attraction as a building lot. They'd be surrounded by woods. And then the other, the fourth side is on, uh, with us and our neighbor. So I don't know, I don't know what they're going to have to go through. So I don't know, I don't know what they're gonna have to go through to build back there, but.
It's gonna be challenging.
There's no sewer, you know, so anyways.
Okay, well, thanks for the clarification, other questions, go ahead Kathleen.
So this is probably a dumb question, because I certainly don't know anything about grinders.
Okay.
But does the generator run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week in order to this work?
This is a backup generator that only kicks on if the electricity to our house fails.
I see, so the generator isn't pumping this, the the thing to the, through the sewer, okay?
It will provide the electricity to pump it, though.
Okay, that well, that makes sense, that that changes things for me, because somehow in my head, I was thinking this was what was powering everything all day long.
No, that's the case if we lose electricity.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah, it's a standby generator.
Correct.
It does kick on, I think, once a week for five minutes or something.
Right, yeah, yeah, we're good.
People, we've only lost, since nineteen eighty-four, we've lost electricity three times. So this is a real kind of backup for us, we even had to fight, you know, should we should we do it, you know, because it's expensive to do, but more peace of mind, I think, to know that everything will run if the electricity fails.
How about your neighbors to the north?
Yep.
How close, next is the building on their property, the home on their property.
Is it the building as what, I didn't hear, sorry?
I'm wondering how close the their house is to the.
I would guess about, I guess about twenty-five feet, because we're separating the property lines, at least at the back of the house, is a six-foot tall wooden fence. You know, that's enclosed, so they couldn't even see it, but in hearing it, I guess it's like in the previous person of sixty-seven decibels, which is, which is pretty good. But they also have a shed then, and then their house, so there's a shed between where this would be in their house.
So the fence goes along the rear and the side?
Yes. So the back is totally enclosed by the fence.
Okay, very good, other questions? Okay, thank you very much, is there anyone on this call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public hearings closed.
Right.
Thank you, thank you, Rick, just before you read the next application, I just want to let the board members know that I need to recuse myself from the next two applications. So Andrea, if you could run the public hearing for these two, I would appreciate it, and I will cut my video off. Whenever you're ready, Rick, and Andrew.
I'll read these two applications together, so please bear with me. Application for A O nine twenty-two, application of Twelve Corners Presbyterian Church. Owner of property located at twelve hundred Witten Road South for an area variance in section two oh three dash two point one C one A. Allow church building setback of fifty-seven point nine feet after a lot line adjustment. Lou the minimum one hundred foot required by code, also describing application and plans on file. Also, application for a ten twenty-two, same owner, same address for an area variance in section two oh seven dash twenty-five. To allow pavement and parking after a lot line adjustment to be up to a side lot line in lieu of a minimum setback of four feet as required by code, also describing application and plans on file.
And who do we have presenting these two?
Good evening, Tom Frommer. Good evening, Tom Frommer, MRB Group, one forty-five Culver Road.
Thank you, go ahead.
Twelve Corners Presbyterian Church is proposing a lot line adjustment with the Brighton School District number one. Two parcel sections are proposed to be transferred through a lot line adjustment out of their main church parcel and merge with the Brighton Schools property. Portions of the property are currently being used by the school district right now. Parcel to the east that is proposed for transfer contains their existing or part of their existing softball fields as well as practice areas for their soccer. As part of the process, two variances will be needed as described by Rick a few minutes ago. The first variance is for the building setback, churches require a hundred-foot setback from the side lot line there, we are now proposing a fifty-seven foot. The second variance is for pavement, and that is in regard to the proposed lot line adjustment would basically take the lot through the parking lot or a portion of it, and that would go from four feet to zero. These setbacks are similar to the south property line and some of the property adjustments that were made back in two thousand and twelve. In regard to overall use, note changes and use are really proposed. The lot line adjustments will allow the church to remain and continue in operation. And the church will also have the opportunity, or the school will also have an opportunity to correct some of their existing encroachments, that's kind of the overview.
And just to confirm, typically, when we see these kind of the setback violations or pavement too close, we're often concerned about the neighboring property and the effect that it will have on that neighboring property owner. The neighboring property owner that it affects is the school district, correct, which is the buyer of this property?
Correct.
There any questions from board members on either of these applications? I'm hearing none, are there any members of the public who would like to be heard on these two applications? As a reminder, this is application for A O nine and for A ten. I'm not hearing any comments from the public, so in that being, the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Dennis, you coming back in?
Okay.
Okay, application for A eleven twenty-two, application of Home Power Systems Contractor and Monica Gilligan, owner of property located at six Kent Park for an area variance in sections two oh three dash two point one B six and two oh three dash nine eight four. To allow standby emergencies generator to be located in the side yard by plus or minus feet from a from the lot line, move in the rear yard behind the house, no closer than ten feet from a lot line as required by code, also describing application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application? We have someone?
There we go. This is, this is Jeff Carlucci.
Okay, Jeff, just give us your address, please, and how you're involved in this application.
Okay, I am the project manager for Home Power Systems that is working with Monica Gilligan, who is the homeowner at six Kent Park in Brighton.
How about just your address, please, for the record?
Oh, my address, okay, sorry, two oh one Dorsey Road, Rochester, New York, one four six one six.
Okay, great, go ahead then, please.
So I'm I'm request, work, requesting an area variance for a standby generator in the side yard at six Kent Park, because I cannot fit it at what would technically be considered the rear of the property, as the homeowner plans to do an addition at the rear, so in the place that we would put the generator we, that would prohibit her from doing a future addition. And if I were to extend it out past that point, then I would need to bury gas and electric lines from the house to the generator, which would not be possible, because she would need to put some foundation in in that location. So there's just no place for me to put this generator other than the south side of her house, which would be between her house and her neighbor's house.
Uh, this, this is member Wright, where is the HVAC equipment on this home? I didn't see it.
It's it's on the north side, right on, right off of Cardiff Park there.
Okay.
Which would, if, and I considered that, but myself and the homeowner thought that the town would not be okay with a generator being over there, because it's an additional item that is even more visible than the location we are requesting.
And how close, I I I do want to comment that this is a, this lot is surrounded on three, two sides by public roads, and then also a third by an alley. And the location you've chosen is the only one that doesn't have sort of a essentially an adjacent road to it.
Correct.
But it is quite close to the neighboring home, do you know how close this equipment will actually be to that neighboring structure?
I believe it will be just about three feet, three to four feet, it's hard for me to know what the exact property line is, but I have an idea. You know, when I'm there standing there, the generator has to be five feet off of her house due to openings, like windows. So that's why the generator is not going to be tucked in as close as it normally could be if there were no openings, which would be eighteen inches from the structure. But that still wouldn't satisfy the ten-foot side setback for Brighton.
I'm not entirely sure I understand the response, is that, is that, is that the distance to the applicant's home, or is that the distance to the neighbor's home?
Sorry, I should have been more specific, the five-foot distance is from the applicant's home. And then I I would venture to guess that the distance between the front of the generator and the property line is about three feet.
Okay, and then can you, can you provide an estimate of how close the neighbor's house is from the lot line?
From the lot line, I would say, I mean, it's a very, it's all very tight in there, it's gotta be ten feet at best.
Uh, can you also, what is the timeline for the neighbor's planned expansion, obviously?
It's not the neighbor's planned expansion, that's.
So what what is the timeline for the applicant's planned expansion on this property?
She did not give me an exact timeline, but she she mentioned something in the area of within the next year, she would be applying for a variance for it.
Where is the location that conflicts with it on the drawing here?
See where I wrote electric meter?
Yes.
Just above that, I put that dotted line, kind of a square dotted line.
Normally, but you would put the unit inside that squared dotted line?
No, I I put that square dotted line there to show that that's where the the homeowner plans to expand in the future.
Okay, so where would you have, you would have otherwise tucked the generator into that alcove?
Right, that would, that would qualify as rear of the house. If if possible, but that's where she plans to put put an addition on.
Can you describe any of the other portions, like that thirteen-foot three line and any of the other?
That's, that's actually right, that's pretty much her driveway area, that's her excuse me, I think that's her driveway area and garage. So that's the other thing, is I could always, I could try to tuck it in closer to the driveway, but it's gonna be right up against the driveway if we're gonna try to be ten feet from the property line. Which normally is not kosher with most people, because then they need to put bollards up to prevent any vehicles from hitting the unit.
You would also agree that that location would be more visible as well?
It would be, yeah, it would be visible from Cardiff and from the alleyway.
Okay.
We're we're trying to put it in the most inconspicuous location as possible, and if the homeowner needs to put up boxwoods or some type of plant to block it from Kent Park, then I'm sure she's willing to do that, we've we've touched on that briefly.
But you could probably do that if it was placed on the opposite end also, correct? If it was placed on the Cardiff Park, you could also propose a fairly decent screening program, correct?
Oh, sure, yeah. And then it's not, you know, so close to a property line, but it's more visible from a road, so we just, we thought we would choose the lesser of two evils, and apparently Monica has spoken to her neighbor and her neighbor was fine with the location. So that's why we went with that.
What's the decibel rating of the generator?
Sixty-seven.
Remind me, maybe this is Rick, but is that sixty-seven at ten feet, or is that sixty-seven?
Twenty.
Twenty-three feet.
So with, so if being, if you're less than ten feet from the generator, it will be significantly more than seven.
Significantly louder, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that, that's a concern I have, that I, I, you know, people don't realize exactly how loud generators can be, they've gotten much better over the years, no doubt about it, but they're still fairly loud, so sometimes people just don't realize, oh, yeah, you can put your generator there, but they don't realize that level of sound.
Yeah, I think that also the tunnel effect here might be part of it, too. You know, given the narrowness of these lots and the location of the homes.
Well, the the exact location of the generator is pretty close to the corner of the house, and the exhaust would be heading towards Kent Park, so it's not going going through any bit of a tunnel.
Well, I just meant that just physically, the location of the two houses, you know, between.
Right, right.
That's what I meant, not not where the fumes would be, yeah.
Well, I mean, I I only mentioned the exhaust, because that's where the noise is coming out of, so we're, yeah, we're not, we're not heading, having any noise traveling eastward through that tunnel between the houses.
You're you're sending it toward the word gas meter that way, okay, correct, yes, okay.
Do we have in the record something that shows where the driveway is?
It's not shown on this survey map, obviously, if if you'd like me to send a picture of that, I possibly could do that.
Heather, I can tell you that the driveway is basically right right behind the, well, you can kind of see it, it's where the square boxes on that survey.
So the thing that.
Where that, where that, Brendan, Brendan, yeah, Brendan, go back, right there, stop, so where it's the thirteen feet, three inches by ten feet.
Right.
The driveway is basically, I believe, right there.
Even.
Kind of in the middle, but for some reason, if you go back to that picture, Brendan, it looks like there's already kind of addition going where that that.
A can't scroll.
Area is, so I'm not sure exactly, and I'm looking at an aerial that kind of shows that whole area is roofed over now, so I'm not sure exactly what that dashed box is representing. I don't know if it's an open porch, or if it's a enclosed space, I'm not sure.
I know that it's, and I know that there's no basement underneath that portion. So that's, that's part of the difficulty in running lines that way, too. Kind of a separate issue, but something that could be worked around, but yeah, that's that's what that, I believe that dotted line represents is whatever, whatever that existing room is. And I don't know, she she didn't give me square footage on what she plans to do as far as an addition either. She just knows that she didn't want it over there, because she plans to add on.
So along, was it considered then to put it in the other side of the, on the other side of the garage? And I I realize that's closer to Cardiff Park, but obviously, it's further from the neighbor, is there a reason why that's not feasible?
Basement doesn't go there, so I can't get lines to it, gas and electric lines, but also she's got that window there in those bushes.
Jeff, this is.
Window, meaning that you have to put the unit further from the house, because there's a window there, correct?
Right, and we already have to put it five feet in the location we're proposing anyways. But she. But she just, she just doesn't think that it's gonna be feasible to put it at that side of the house anywhere, cuz I, I tried to exhaust all options with her and she just wasn't hearing that.
I apologize, I apologize. I know that you already answered this, but remind me again, where's the HVAC on the site? I'm, I'm gonna draw it on the map so I remember this time.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, on the Cardiff Park side of the house.
Not in that.
No.
Can you tell us a little more specifically where?
I think it might be in the location where it says seven point nine feet.
Sorry. You go back to the survey map, please?
Sure. I was gonna ask you if it would help if I pulled up pictometry, cuz I could do that also.
And, and would there be a problem with locating the generator with the HVAC since already utility, at least you know, some utility is already there?
I, I would be completely willing to put it on that side, and I think she would too. We, like I said, we just both assumed that that would be um, a no-go with the town because of how visible it would be.
Okay, so was it you, Ken, that had something to?
Yes, thank you, Dennis. Uh, Jeff, uh, this is Town Attorney Ken Gordon. I was just wondering if you can talk a little bit about alternative enclosures or additional enclosures or alternative models of generators that might produce less noise?
Um, there is no alternative enclosure. You never wanna put what we call in the business a doghouse over or around it unless it's like five feet all the way around. It just creates even, even more of an eyesore in our opinion, but you also don't want these things enclosed. They need to be able to intake cleanly and exhaust cleanly. Um, as far as other standby generators, you're not gonna get one that is, um, significantly quieter than these, I mean, all these generators, whether it's a Kohler, a Generac, or Cummins, they're all right in this pretty similar decibel rating.
Okay.
And how does this unit compare to an HVAC? I believe you said something about that in relation, is it shorter?
No, it's actually longer, left to right is four feet. The depth front to back is twenty-five inches. And then the height without a base under it is twenty-nine inches. But we would be putting a six-inch steel powder-coated base underneath it to support it and get it kinda up out of the snow.
Okay, other questions, comments here at this point? I think we got a good grasp of the site, I think. Um, and we can certainly discuss it further. Um, any other questions for Jeff? Okay, thanks very much. All right, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none on the public hearing's close.
Application for a twelve twenty-two, application of Megan P. Spencer, owner property located at one eleven Hampshire Drive for an area variance in section two oh five dash two, allow garage addition to extend two point five feet into the seven point five foot side setback required by code. All scam and application and plans on file. Just before we, um, Dennis, just before we start, if I could have Brendan go to the, um, proposed plan, which is a couple slides off, I believe.
Okay.
Other way. Keep going. Right there. Thanks.
Okay, good. Okay, and who do we have speaking for this application?
You hear me?
Yep.
All right, Justin Spencer, my wife is the owner of one eleven Hampshire Drive.
Okay, and you, okay, so very good. Well then, why don't you go ahead and proceed?
All right, currently we have a flat roof, uh, mudroom that is tied into a small, uh, approximately ten by eighteen garage. The northwest corner of the mudroom is failing, therefore it is caving in and it is pulling actually away from the home itself. And then we have leakage going into the garage. Um, we have a family of five and we have large vehicles, so that's what brought us to this point of doing, um, an addition because of a safety issue. We're requesting that we have, uh, per code, it's required seven point five feet for the side setback. We're looking to extend into that a little bit, so it would actually be two point four feet. And we still have, uh, five point one feet to the property line, just on the garage portion of this.
Okay. All right, questions by the board? Members?
I included in the file also that the neighbors directly to the south have included an approval letter. We've talked to them, they're completely for the project. Also, the house directly next door to the north has the same scenario that we're proposing, has a two-foot extension out on the garage, so it's in proportion with the neighborhood and their, uh, surrounding homes.
I'm just trying to get an idea of, um, on the drawing here, you talk about not wanting to shift it, um, up and have it even with that uh, side of the house because, in part because of the window in the mudroom. Are you, are you reducing the size of that mudroom window?
Um, yes, it is gonna be reduced a little bit and we can't shift it any further else we reduce the window completely if we went to the north.
Okay.
I believe there's a photograph of, uh, the van, is that the?
That's one of my, I have three children under eight, so spaces are premium. I like to do woodworking, so any time, or any, you know, space that I can have in a garage to have as the shop area is gonna be beneficial.
Okay. Okay, good. Other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone on this call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing's closed. Okay, friends, do we need a couple minute break or would you like to proceed?
I'd like to take a quick break if we could, please.
Okay, how about five minutes? It's, uh, eight nineteen.
That'll work, thanks.
That's good.
Oh, Matt, while we're waiting here for a couple minutes, uh, how are you doing so far? Making sense?
Yeah, so far so good, yeah. I have all the paperwork.
Yeah, well, it'll make more sense when you, you're, when you hear the deliberation part, you'll kinda connect the dots a little.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense. I've been looking at overhead shots on Google Maps and that kinda thing too, so.
Very fine, all right. Yeah, and if you, you know, have any questions later, you can get a hold of us.
Ab- absolutely.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you get? I'm back.
You can, Brendan, you can take a look and see who's here and who's not, cuz you still have this Hampshire Drive up on the screen here. Okay, do we have everybody? I don't know, Heather back?
I'm just back, waiting for Kathleen.
Waiting for who?
Kathleen. Hey, Dennis.
Yes.
We're good to go.
Oh, good. Okay, very good. Hi, Kathleen. Very good. All right, so, uh, when you're ready, Rick? Let's talk. So let's talk about three twenty, Warrington.
You wanna just start, go through it from beginning then?
Yeah.
Then it's the beginning, yes.
Yes, that is the beginning, so that's what we'll do. Okay, we're located in central Brighton and three twenty, Warrington. Okay, so, uh, does anyone have any concerns about this application?
I don't.
I don't.
Okay, yeah, I have it, so, yeah, I don't either. I think it's pretty straightforward. Okay, so I move we approve application for A O one twenty-two based on the following findings of fact. One, the existing garage and shed are, are deteriorated and require replacement. Two, the owner is desirous of incorporating the shed structure into a rebuilt garage using the existing footprint, which is approximately two point four feet from the rear and side property lines. Three, no negative effect on the character to the neighborhood will be expected from the construction of this garage at two point four feet. Many similar garages are located within the subject neighborhood. And vegetation that exists on the neighboring property minimizes the view of it and it will materially not be changed from the current. Um, conditions, it's based on the testimony given and plans submitted as to the specific location of the garage. And I guess building permits, right, Rick?
Oh, yeah, number two, all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Very good. Can I get a second? Yep.
Andrea with a second?
Yes.
The motion is to approve with.
Hey, Rick. I'm, I'm interrupting. I gotta start interrupting and trying to push my agenda forward here of getting us back on Robert's rules. Um, so once a motion is made and seconded, can we just take a pause and see if there are any members who have any comments to discuss about the motion now that it's actually been made? Can we just get in the habit of doing that, please?
I would imagine we could do that, but you'll probably remind us cuz we'll probably forget.
I know, I know, I'm, I'm, I'm slowly making little changes here, but that's what I, I, I think is more in accord with Robert's rules is to just have this discussion once a motion has been made. And that way also, if, if anybody thinks of anything that, um, they believe would lead someone to offer an amendment or to table the application, um, that would be the time to do that as well.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, thank you.
No problem. We need to have happy attorneys here in the town of Brighton, so that's what we'll try to do. Yes, there's many of you, many of you. We're surrounded, okay? All right, okay, so is there any discussion about said motion? Okay, all right.
The motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. McKay, Drury?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. De- De Augustine?
Dan.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Okay, so the next is two fifty, or excuse me, two eighty-five Metro Park. With the, uh, temporary trailer, any concerns here?
There are locations in Brighton that I would not want this temporary trailer. This isn't one of them.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I mean, there, I mean, I was a little surprised cuz they do have those big tanks or something out there. I thought that's where the trailer's gonna go, but I guess it's gonna go next to it, but, uh, is, is Andrea said, it's you know, surrounded by other similar uses, lots of space around it, I don't see a problem with it. Uh, what I was gonna suggest is, just to make it easier, we'll just make it limited to twelve months.
Yes, absolutely.
They asked for nine to twelve, might as well make it twelve.
Okay. Yep, okay, all right. If there's no other concerns, then please proceed with your motion.
I move we approve application for A O two twenty-two for a temporary reverse revocable use permit pursuant to section two one nine dash four to allow for a stor- storage trailer on site for nine to twelve months based upon the following findings of fact. One, the temporary revocable use permit to allow a temporary use of land is a type two action pursuant to six NYCRR, section six one seven point five C twenty-one. And no further review is required pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Two, the temporary storage trailer will be placed in an existing parking lot in an industrial car. The location will not have an adverse impact on the adjacent uses. It will allow temporary storage while more permanent solution is found by the owner. Three, the requested temporary revocable use permit is a reasonable use of the property. Uh, this approval is subject to the following conditions. One, based on the plan submitted testimony given. Two, this permit is for a maximum of twelve months of issuance. Three, no hazardous materials will be stored in the trailer.
Okay, we have a second?
Judy.
Judy, okay. Is there any discussion about this application and this motion? Okay, Rick?
Motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. De Augustine?
Dan.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yeah.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Please up the record. The motion is approved with conditions.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, so then we're moving over to CCR with the. Okay, so we had the letter from, I think everyone understands the letter from Chris Roth. Sounds like there were some open issues, obviously. Okay, so what are people's thoughts here?
I'm fine with it. Uh, this is Judy. Um, it's a continuation of. Of of plans or variants they've had in the past. Um, my question to you is in, it can come up when we do the conditions, but. Can we put in something in conditions regarding the placement of the tent um and? Either more care or something um because of the letter from the fire marshal?
Well, obviously, we can put whatever condition, but it. It sounds like it's really more of a coordination and that's a discussion issue that didn't happen. I. I presume they have a professional company that puts these.
She said they do, she said.
Right, and so they generally you would think would be familiar and. It would seem like what's required here is a meeting with Chris Roth, just to. Set the rules of the road and then they obviously need to follow them, because. You know, we can't obviously have him showing up there or getting complaints that. There's flames coming or what, you know, whatever other concerns there might be.
Well, do we, do we condition it based upon fire marshal approval?
Yeah, so it's always be conditioned, whenever we issue a. A T and R and that includes a tent, we always require that they get all necessary permits from the fire marshal.
Right.
I think what may have happened is that they apply for the permit from Chris and then they go out there and the tent is all constructed. And not constructed in the right place.
Right.
So now they have this event that's taking place. They don't have the time to take down the tent and, you know, reinstall it. So Chris is caught between a rock and a hard place, you know. Shutting them down or telling them, hey, you guys are not meeting code.
Right. Now, Ken, just, Ken, just a quick question for you. I mean, if, let's just say the first one, what, they had the meeting, the first one goes up, and then the second one, there's a problem again. I mean, do we have an option to curb the remaining part of this? Variance if they were not to cooperate and put one up inappropriately?
Yeah, uh, a couple of things. One is, um, I would suggest. That we have language similar to what Rick suggested as is custom. But in addition, that perhaps we consider adding a condition. That the um meeting with the fire marshal take place prior to the construction. Or erection of the temporary tent. Um, and make that an express provision and condition in the TNR. And then, um, it's revocable. It's part of the, part of the name of the permit, right?
Yeah, I just wanted you to speak.
So, yeah, I mean, we, if they revoke, if they violate a condition by code. The um TNR can be revoked. Um, so, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, good. Alright, so other questions by the board members, just before we look at those or concerns?
The only other thing I wanted to.
To say that, uh, it sounds like that some additional language is justified here, so.
Sure.
I think Ken is proposing that the condition has a little bit more of a plan for what order things need to happen in, so that it's not. So that he's not, the fire marshal's not put in that position.
Right, and it it's also, it's also onerous for him if there's six events that he needs to come and have a meeting in front of everyone. At every one of those events, it would seem to me that if the meeting was held at the beginning. And the contractor, whoever's putting these tents up, understands it. Then if subsequently there's an inspection and it's not correct, then that's where the trigger might get pulled.
Yeah, it giving, giving the fire marshal the. You know, toolkit, so to speak, to be able to more timely address these, not feel like he's between a rock and a hard place. The other thing I wanted to address was these heaters. Um, and and Andrea, was it you who was asking the questions about the heaters?
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I I was confused and I I thought I saw a look of confusion on your face as well as to his answers or her answers. Um, because at first I thought. She said, well, we've never been told we can't use those propane heaters. But then at the end she said, well, of course, we've never put one of those propane heaters under one of our temporary tents.
I know, I, which is the only thing I care about.
Right, and I think it's the only thing Chris Roth cares about.
No.
Sure, but is this a new New York state law?
Yeah, I think that's what she was, I think that's what, that's what I heard her to say, that she didn't, she thought it wasn't a requirement. She thought it was a suggestion versus the mandate, and that's how I heard it.
But under, under, understand if the, our fire marshal says that he doesn't want open flame underneath that tent. Then whether it's a state law or not, is that's something that we can inflict? So whether other towns or other places allow it is really not our problem, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I just didn't think it was that inconsistent. I thought she was just trying to express that she had never heard that it was a state law.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, and this could be a relatively new law. I mean, this is prohibited by the twenty twenty fire code.
Right.
Twenty twenty fire code may have come out last year.
Sure.
Um, so I think it's important that, you know, we maybe just make that. As as stated in Chris's letter, we just reiterate that, uh, you know, that that last paragraph.
Sure.
Temporary heating, you can't use the portable.
Open flame, man.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Right, for temporary heating only approved portable forced air heating units shall be provided. It's there.
Yeah, it's certainly not worded as a suggestion in here, and I.
Right.
And I think that we can credit. Work that he uses. I mean, he's indicated.
Right.
That these, that style pedestal style heaters and other propane appliances used. Under a temporary structure are strictly prohibited by the twenty twenty fire code of New York State.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, Chris is, Chris is never sloppy with the language he uses.
Okay.
So let me just, let me just kind of touch base real quick and the conditions, you're gonna wanna touch, but on the length of the. Of the um event in terms of.
Yeah.
Six events for the year twenty twenty-two. Fire marshal permits, the typical one that we put on there, all required permit. Also a condition that prior to the first event. Prior to the issuance of, prior to the erection of the first tent, that they ha- have a meeting with the fire marshal. To discuss location of the tents. Locate, tent location, and then the portable heater. Um, condition, so I got four conditions there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Do they have anything that?
Oh, well, should we put ending hour or? Over eleven P M?
Well, she did say noise ordinance. We certainly can say the event shall end by eleven o'clock, sure.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that.
Just to be on the safe side, okay.
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
Alright.
Alright, does anyone have any other concerns before Judy draft, uh, goes ahead with the motion? To discuss or throw on the table there?
Okay, I I thank Kathleen, because this was hers from last year and I'm using most of it and then just what we've talked about, okay? Um, I approve application, um, hold on. For a O three twenty-two based on the following findings of fact. Um, number one, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow an erection of a tent. And hold up to six outdoor wedding and club special events for the remainder of the year twenty twenty-two. Two, granting of the permit will not negatively impact the health, safety, or general welfare of the community. The tent will be installed by a professional tent company and will only be for special events and weddings. Three, the special events will last no more than a day and conclude by eleven P M. Four, there is ample parking to accommodate the event goers. And five, granting of the request. Will not result in a change of character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to surrounding properties. As the location of the proposed tent is within the confines of the country club grounds behind the club, not clearly visible from the road. Okay, conditions, number one, the application is granted per the application submitted. And testimony given for the remainder of twenty twenty-two for up to six events per year. Two, all necessary fire marshal permits shall be obtained. Three, a meeting with the fire marshal prior to the place. Prior, I lost my writing. Oh, I'm sorry, a meeting prior to the, the. A meeting with the fire marshal shall take place prior to the setting up of the tent for a correct and safe location. Three, um, that's three, four. There will be no gas portable open flame heaters. And I didn't catch it, only what did you say, something about hot air or cold air can be used? Is that correct?
I think what you should do, Judy, is just really read it, just like. Um, Chris wrote it here, so condition number four, I'll just read it here, Judy.
Please do, yes.
If temporary heating is requested, only approved portable forced air eating, heating units shall be provided. Portable LP gas-fired pedestal style heaters for other propane appliances. Used under a temporary structure are strictly prohibited by the twenty twenty fire code of New York State. And the manufacturer product listing.
Thank you. Okay. And I don't think it's necessary to repeat eleven P M, because she said that and we put it in findings of fact, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Can you have a second?
Um, before we, if I have a slight modification.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, I. When she indicated that the meeting needs to take place, I don't think she limited it to just the first construction of the first tent.
She wants it.
I'm sorry, what was, what was the concern?
Limited.
Oh, Judy's?
Yes, I, I mean, you know, they could do it correctly the first time. I'm comfortable with them meeting each time to be sure if. The board goes along with that, or do you think the first time will be sufficient?
I I hope the first time sufficient. I don't want to put the burden on Chris that he's gotta meet with them six times, because they can't get their, you know, what together.
So then if they are in violation, then it's their.
Their violation, Chris goes out there and finds them in violation, then Chris can come back and say they did it. Wrong again after we met the first time, and then we can act on them and say, okay, you guys. We'll, we'll send them a letter saying we're gonna revoke the permit.
Okay, I'm fine then.
So jumping in as parliamentarian again, um, could we first get a second to the proposed motion?
I second it.
Alright, and then Judy, would you, would you accept as a friendly amendment as suggested by Heather? The insertion of the word first, when you talk about setting up the first tent? Would you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I certainly do, yes.
And Kathleen, would you also, as the second? Alright, there you go. Okay. We're good.
Okay, very good. So we have a second. Is there any other discussion about this motion? Okay.
Hang on, lost my place. Okay, the motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Mr. De Augustine?
Dan.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yeah.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Alright, the next application is, uh, the. Sawgrass. Food truck. Is there anyone having any concerns about this?
I have no concerns.
Yeah. Also, okay, very good. It's Kathleen.
Alright, well, and here Ed gets a shout out, because it was so excellent last year. I am stealing. Almost verbatim, uh, for what he did. So I move to approve application. For a dash O four dash two-two based on the following findings of fact. One, the requested temporary and revocable use permit is a type two action pursuant to six. N Y C R R section six seven one seven point five V twenty-one. And no review is required pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Two, the temporary use permit is consistent with the medical offices and ambulatory surgical center. Uses in the area and provides a temporary amenity for the U R M C. That's U R M C medical staff. The requested time duration is consistent with the reasonable use of the parcel and is the minimum relief necessary. Four, a single self-contained food truck will not adversely affect or impact public facilities. Five. The food truck once a week for three to four hours during the months of May, June, July, and August. Will not produce a change in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to the public. Six, the location of the food truck is a large parking field. Provisions of trash and recycling containers and the fact that only one. Properly licensed food truck will be allowed to ensure adequate protection of the health, safety, and community character. Seven, the food truck will provide a welcomed amenity to the U R M C healthcare staff. Conditions, one, this temporary and revocable permit is based on the drawings, drop. Documents and testimony provided. Two, the applicant will provide adequate trash and recycling containers for use by customers of the food truck. And be responsible for trash removal. Three, the food truck will only operate one time per week for three to four hours at a time. Or, the food truck on the site must be currently licensed and successfully completed the twenty twenty-two. Fire safety inspection by the City of Rochester Fire Department. Which establishes full compliance with the twenty twenty-one fire code of the state of New York. Section three nineteen.
Okay, so do we have a second for this?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion about the motion?
I, I do have what I guess Ken would call a friendly amendment. Yeah, I know what you're gonna do, Ed, of course. Um, so the, the, the code sections were wrong. So it should be six N Y C R R. The actual sign, section sign. Six one seven point five C twenty-one.
Oh, C is in cat, okay, it was listed as V.
Yeah, C.
Guess we missed the.
And you made a face. Alright, only cause I thought it was B twenty-one, but okay.
Okay.
Oh, I'll, I'll double check while we're sitting here, but I'm pretty sure.
Are both of the folks making?
Oh, C twenty, C twenty-one, he's right, cat, he like cat.
I, I accept, I, I accept a friendly, uh, change.
Okay, and whoever made the second, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It was me, and yes.
Okay, very good. Alright, let's proceed.
Hey, a motion is to approve with conditions. Um. Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mr. De Augustine?
Hey.
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yeah.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. So the next one is Middlebrook and. That um relates to the porch. So any thoughts here?
Judy, I think it's fine. They really put a lot of thought into it and we're careful with measurements and so on, and it's. It's really a nice addition and there's another porch on the street and the little one up at the corner that we approved, so I'm all in favor.
Okay, uh, does anyone else have any concerns? Related to this? Yeah, I think it's good too. And then, uh, Rick, is there any difficulty with the little modifications that ARB is asking them to make? From the original application, uh, should we?
No, as long as it doesn't affect the footprint, which it doesn't, then no.
It's actually making it a little smaller, excellent. Alright, okay.
Would you wanna, would you wanna have as a condition ARB approval?
Yeah, it's a standard.
Yeah, we all do. That's required, yeah, right. Okay, Andrea.
Alright, I move to approve application for a.
All right, I move to approve application for a dash oh five dash twenty two for variance, et cetera. All as described on the application and plans on file based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the granting of the requested front yard variance not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Or be a detriment to nearby properties. The proposed project is consistent with several other front is constructed in the neighborhood. That intrude into the front yard setback and thus will appear consistent with surrounding properties. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial as it represents less than a fifteen percent increase in the setback. As required, required code. And also in light of the fact that other porches in the neighborhood and on the street have similar setbacks. The open nature of the porch also mitigates the intrusion into the setback. Number three, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method. Or without a variance, the property's current setback of forty three feet would not. That construction of a usable porch without a variance permitting construction of said porch into the front setback. Number four, there is no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. In the neighborhood or district. Conditions, number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the porch described in and in the location as depicted on the application. And in the testimony given, number two, all necessary permits and architectural review board approval must be obtained.
Second, Judy.
Okay, any discussion about this motion?
Uh, can we just add building permits?
Well, I, I said all necessary permits.
Okay, that's fine, I don't want to mess with it.
I mean, I can, I can amend it to unnecessary building permits and architectural review board approval.
Yes, that's what I would like.
Okay, so I, I'll accept, I'm amending my motion. All necessary bill permits and architectural review board approvals must be obtained.
Okay, and the second, agree, yes.
It's okay.
Okay, then now we can proceed.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Miss Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yeah.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Mr. D Augustine. Uh, Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right.
Yeah.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, so the next one is just the extension of the previous variance. For the garage, any concerns there?
No.
Okay. Heather.
Uh, yeah, I just have a quick question, um. If we don't specify a time period for these sorts of variances, how long are they in effect?
One year, they need to pull a permit and they need to diligently start construction. Within a year of granting of the, of the variants. So that's why they came back because there's no way he was going to be able to start construction within a year. Even if he walked in today with his building permit. Application, so he needed the extension of a year.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the clarification, um. I move that we approve application for a oh six twenty two. For an extension of an approved area variance, which was number four A zero five one. Allowing for a garage addition to extend six plus or minus feet. Onto the forty foot front setback required by code based on the following findings of fact. One, the proposed variance would not create a substantial change to the neighborhood. Many nearby residences have additions with similar construction and footprint and in walking the adjoining streets to. Uh, null top, it's apparent the average front yard setback in this neighborhood is far less than forty feet. Two, the difficulty necessitating the variance can't be solved in another manner, not involving a variance. Given the current home layout and location of entryways as well as the drainage swells in the rear yard. The requested variance is necessary to satisfy the needs of the applicant. And permit construction of a garage appropriately sized for modern vehicles. Number three, the requested variance is not substantial, given that the increase represents only ten percent. Of the code specified minimum and the front steps of the home already extend the same distance into the front yard. Number four, the variant is the minimum necessary to grant relief from the difficulty. And finally, five, there is no evidence that the variance will have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Uh, and I move with respect to the following conditions be included. One is the variance granted herein applies only to the renovation described in the application and the testimony given. And number two, all necessary building permits. Uh, must be obtained, I'm not sure if architectural review board needs to be a condition.
Yes, this, this is the front addition, right, it's the garage addition, yes, it does, attached garage addition. Oh yeah, we could add that too, I don't know if they just got missed the last time or what, but.
Okay, so that second condition then will read, uh, all necessary building permits and architectural review board approvals must be obtained.
Second, Judy.
Okay, any other comments or discussion on this motion? Okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions, Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right.
Yes.
Mr. D Augustine. Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Miss Schmidt.
Yes.
Miss Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Okay, the next application relates to Indian Spring Lane and the generator in the side yard. Any concerns here?
I, I have no concerns, but just in light of maybe other applications, I would probably point out in our facts. The distance from the road, the distance from the neighbor. Yeah, okay.
Agreed, yeah, the, the shape of the slide, you know, there's. As we go through all these generators, the, the, every setting is different, so. When we talk broadly about a side or rear yards, just comparing like the Cardiff there, you know, it's a quite a different situation, so. We just have to always make sure we're clear about that, so it's important, okay. So I have it, I move we approve application for a oh seven twenty two based on the following findings of fact. One, the proposed location of the generator in the side yard is preferable since access to next necessary utilities. It difficult. Uh, to have it placed in the rear of the structure. Two, the proposed location is seventy feet from the nearest neighbor's structure. And a hundred and thirty five feet from the street and barely visible. Three, no other location on the property in the rear yard would meet the needs of the applicant. And four, no negative effect on the character of the neighborhood will result. From the placement in this location since existing and proposed landscaping will. Mitigate the view in the side yard. Conditions, one, it's based on the drawing submitted and testimony given. In relation to the specific size and location of the unit. Two, all necessary permits shall be obtained. And three. The town's decibel ratings for this unit shall be met.
I don't know, it's proper for me to make the comment before.
Well, let's, let's do the second first, so we'll follow the parliamentarians thoughts. Okay, so what are your comments, sir?
My comments are, one, I don't know if we need the decibel condition because they, they, it's in the application and I know they gotta meet code. That's, that's one thing, you want to make a, a condition regarding screening, since you mentioned.
I mean, he, he wasn't a hundred percent specific, so we could add, we could trade number three then and suggest that. Landscaping as proposed by the applicant shall be installed. Cause he, he did talk about a couple possibilities, so again, we don't want it to sign the landscaping.
Yeah, I don't want to be specific on what type of landscape or anything like that, I think, um.
I think, but I said, I think.
All to help screen the unit from.
Yeah, as proposed, you know, because he did propose it, okay.
And I'm in agreement.
So we removed the number three regarding the decibel level and replaced it with landscaping as proposed.
Yes, and we're both good with that.
Okay. Motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right.
Yeah.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Miss Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. D Augustine. Oh, Ms. Schmidt. I'm sorry, Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
And Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, so the next application is Midland Avenue, it's an interesting area up there, there's a lot of interesting. Situations up there.
Yeah, no, it's a, it's, and we've had, last year we had another variance where they combined their lots.
Right. Right.
This is, they're, they're. You know, now that I've been out there a couple of times, you can see they want to age in place. They're looking at, um, expanding a little bit further.
Yeah.
Um, they're upgrading, um. I think getting this grinder pump and being able to connect to the sewers is a positive thing. Uh, Rick, they said they're connecting at Willard Road, is that a town sewer?
That sewer was extended as part of the subdivision that just went in.
Yep, yep, yep.
That is a dedicated town line now.
Yeah, and so they couldn't reach it because of the gravity situation, so they need a pump, is that the idea?
Why he needs a pump, right, because his property is lower than. Than the.
Connection to the sewer.
Connection point, right.
Yeah.
And so he puts in an individual pump versus a pump station someplace.
He's got on his site, it basically goes, the grinder is a pump. So sewage leaves his house, goes into this grinder and is pumped to the sewer line that's out at the road.
Okay.
So it's got to pump it uphill a little bit, can't be gravity fed.
Yep. And that's an improvement, I mean, it always strikes me that's an improvement over having septic fields.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be less.
Yeah, we like to see people connect to sewers.
Okay, sounds good, all right, so is there any other concerns about this before Ed proceeds? Seems pretty straightforward, a little complicated, but straightforward enough.
Okay. I move we approve application for a dash oh eight dash two two as amended. For an area variance from section two oh three dash two point one B eight. To allow a standby electric generator to be located one point five feet. From a rear yard lot line. Uh, open print east line, close print and five feet from a side lot, lot, lot. Line, open print, north lot line, in lieu of the minimum ten foot setback required by code. Based on the following findings of fact. The requested area variance for a single family home is a type two action pursuant to six NYCRR. Section sign, six one seven point five C sixteen and seventeen. And no review is required pursuant to the state environmental quality review act. Two, the requested variance is to allow the location of a standby generator to, among other things. Power a sewer grinder pump to allow access to town sewers for the existing house. The house was built in nineteen twenty nine and sits on a pre-existing legal non-conforming lot with little rear yard setbacks. The location is required because of the placement of utilities in the house. Three, no other alternatives can alleviate the difficulty and produce the desired result. As noted, the lot is a pre-existing legal non-conforming lot and there is little space to the rear lot line. The variance is minor in the circumstances and does not alter existing conditions. The connection to the sewer will allow an existing septic system to be discontinued. Four, there will be no unacceptable change in character of the neighborhood and no substantial detriment to nearby properties. Is expected. The standby generator will be placed within an existing stockyard fence enclosure. It will not be visible from other properties. Five, the hardship was not self-created by the applicant. Six, the health, safety and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by approval of the variance. The filing conditions apply, the variance is based on the application submitted. And only authorizes a project described therein to subject to obtaining necessary permits and inspections.
Okay.
Second, Judy.
Okay, any discussion about this application or the motion? Okay, very good.
The only thing that I would know is just that, um, in comparing it with others that. There was testimony with respect to. The neighbor to the north is blocked by the fencing and a shed before there's any neighboring structures residential wise.
Okay, so if I could amend. Where I talk about the generator will be placed within an existing backyard, now I had a last question to, in that last sentence, point four. Uh, the neighbor to the north, uh, also has a shed. Uh, that will help screen, um, the standby generator from their house. Is that work?
Sounds reasonable. Okay.
Are you okay with that? Judy, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins right.
Yes.
Mr. D Augustine. Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, Andrea, can you handle these two going off again?
Andrea.
Andrea, you're muted.
You're taking over for Dennis on these two?
Sorry about that, I, it, in my defense, I, I've had incredible, my, I've lost like four times since our meeting began, so. I feel like every once in a while, everybody pauses and I'm like, oh no, do I have to log off and log back in, okay. Sorry about that. Right, application, should we take these as separate applications for discussion? Yeah.
Individually.
All right, so. Application for a dash oh nine dash twenty two. Any discussion, this is the application for, um. The setback line, yeah, the setback for the actual, uh, building itself.
And, and as, as was mentioned in the discussion, I, I don't think it was clear, um, this board granted a variance. Uh, probably we're talking maybe ten years ago. When they broke out a separate building lot for a group home.
The heritage.
And we granted a variance of, I believe it was as close as like seventeen feet. To the lot line of that. It was a flag lot, so it was a seventeen foot setback to the pole of that, um, group home. So we have in the past granted relief on this property in regards to building setbacks.
The, the only thing I'll mention is that the, this type of a variance would apply. Um, even if the church use changed, uh, this building could be repurposed for something else. And that, once we grant this variance, whatever building that is, would still be permitted to be that. Would still be permitted to be that close to the lot line.
Correct, and the thing is though, the, the, the use would have to be a permitted use in the district or they would need to get a variance or use variance.
Yeah.
And I think this is common with a lot of churches. Um.
In this, this use here, the zoning here, the zoning here is.
Residential.
R L B. I think it's R L B.
R L B, correct.
Yeah.
You know, and this is just happening with churches in general. They're losing membership and they have to sell off assets. Um, it's too bad. Uh, but I think this is a good um result for to maintain twelve corners Presbyterian there. Well, that's my.
So uh, any other comments about the application? If not, Judy, do you have a motion on this first one?
Okay, um, I have a seeker declaration. I move that the board, having considered the information presented by the applicant. And having conducted the required review pursuant to seeker, adopts the negative declaration prepared by town staff. And determines that the proposed action will not likely have a significant environmental impact. I also approve, I also move that we approve application for A oh nine twenty two. Based on the following findings of fact. One, the reason for the requested variance of a church building setback of fifty seven point nine feet. In lieu of the minimum one hundred feet required by code is due to a lot line adjustment. Two, the lot line adjustment is a result of a parcel of church land being transferred to the Brighton School District. Three, this layout is the minimum variance as it allows the school district and the church to have maintenance access to the parcel. Four, no change in use for this parcel is proposed at this time. Therefore, the variance will not produce any visual change to the area. Conditions, one, this variance only applies to the building setback as described in the written application. And testimony presented, and Ken, you'll have to tell me if this is correct. Two, all necessary legal transactions must be obtained.
I don't think you have to be any condition.
No, I don't think.
Nothing, just that number one?
Well, the only thing I can say is that. We can condition your first one in case in a future time, they want to go re-subdivide, subdivide again. And they're gonna hit that fifty seven feet again, they could say, well, you gave us the right the first time, so we can do it again without review. So that's why if you condition it just per this particular. Resubdivision.
Application and testimony.
They come back at a, at a later date, they're gonna have to come back to us again.
Okay, so then just number one.
So repeat your, repeat your number one again.
Okay, this variance only applies to the building setback as described in the written application and testimony presented.
Yeah, I think that covers it.
I'll second it.
I have a second. Thanks Heather. Um, Judy, could you mention that the requested variance isn't substantial? Cause that is one of the required findings we have to make for.
Yeah. I did not say that. That's a good point. Um, let me see. I could put it in with number one. There's a reason for the requested variance of church building setbacks. Of the substantial, okay, listen to this um Andrea and think. The reason for the requested variance for this church building setback of, of substantial fifty seven point nine. In lieu of the minimum one hundred? Do you want it there? Cause it's the only place where I mentioned.
We want, we want to make sure that um the finding that it is not a substantial.
Right.
But that's the problem, because it is to some degree substantial. It's almost a fifty percent, right? So you gotta, gotta do it in that reverse like we've done before Andrea where although it is substantial. Why it doesn't have an impact.
Yeah. I would suggest adding a number that says something like it's not substantial in light of the fact that the location of the buildings. And the, you know, the neighbors aren't changing uh and thus, you know, I, I would sort of couch it like that. Like it's, it's not substantial because. The ownership is staying the same and the location of any structures is staying the same.
Well, it's not, the ownership is not staying the same. That's the reason for the variance.
Yeah.
I, I mean, the ownership, but like the, the two neighboring properties will still be the same even though the lot line changes.
Okay.
So the adjoining properties will not change.
Okay.
And again, we can, we can talk about language, but I, it, we do need to say it's not substantial in the, in the motion.
Well, that has to be a finding.
Well, and we just, we just, I think Rick just also told us that we've approved before something that goes down to seventeen feet. So while fifty percent might not be a tiny amount, it's certainly not the most substantial. Uh, that we've approved even within this area.
Okay, so Andy, we said the variance is not substantial in that, what was that? What did you add after that?
I would say in light of the fact that the adjoining property owners. Ro- will remain the same and no structure will move as, you know, or. Change locations as a result of this lot line change.
Okay, cause I did, one of my findings was that there would be no um. No changes in use for this parcel are proposed at this time. Therefore, the variance will not produce any visual change in the area. Is that?
Yeah, I, I think that that's still stands. I, I just, I think you need something else to say.
Okay, so then I will say number five, this variance is not substantial in light of the fact that the. The adjacent property owners will remain the same. Right? Cause they are.
A- and maybe, I, I don't know, go ahead, Rick.
Uh, you don't like it?
No.
Okay.
I, I would like something more generic like um.
I hope the synographer gets this. Go ahead.
The requested area variance is not substantial. Given the overall size, dimension and location of the property. And the uses adjacent to the parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Rick?
Yeah, I think that's pretty generic.
Okay. So that would be number.
Holly, Holly, did you get that as a fifth um finding?
Number five. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
You. Thank you.
And then Heather, are you okay with that amendment? A second, okay. Any comments on this motion? If not, I think, Rick, we're ready for a vote.
The motion is to approve with conditions, Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mister Di Augustine.
Hey.
Mister Primo.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
And Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Now moving on to application for A dash ten dash twenty two. This is the um side lot, side setback lot. Uh, for the parking.
Right.
Yep. Any, any comments, any issues with approval on this application?
Just before you go, before you, yeah, Andrea, just before you go on, I think kind of getting around your substantial, um substantial request here. You certainly can, or whoever's making the uh motion can certainly say that it is actually, there's a cross access easement that's gonna be placed over it. So for access for both properties. For use by both properties, so. That really is uh. You know, the reason to grant them the variance right there.
Kathleen, did you get that for a?
I have, I have to say, I, I'm feeling like I have COVID brain right now. Um, I did not understand what Rick was saying about the variance, so I apologize.
The um four foot setback where they're putting that new property line, so it basically goes right through the existing pavement. Both the school and the church will have a cross access easement over it. So they both can basically use it for cars pulling in and out. So therefore, you, if you're going to share your parking lot, you're gonna have a zero setback for park pavement.
Okay.
Point, point being that that would go to the finding of fact regarding substantial.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. I thought that was like why we should grant it and I'm like, oh, okay, I'm gonna have to think of that. Alright. Just writing this down. Alright. Ready to go? I move that the board, having considered the information presented by the applicant. And having conducted the review, required review pursuant to seeker, adopts the negative declaration. Prepared by town staff and determines that the proposed action will not likely have a significant environmental impact. I also moved that we approve application for A dash ten dash two two. Based on the following findings of fact. One, the applicant, Twelve Corners Presbyterian Church, is seeking to have two parcels. Sections transferred through a lot line adjustment of the main church parcel and merged with the Brighton School District property. As part of a proposed transfer, the church is requesting this variance to allow a pavement and parking comma. After a lot line, paren subdivision, close print adjustment comma. To be up to. A side paren north, close paren lot line in lieu of a minimum setback of four feet as required by code. Two, there will be no change in use at this time. Three, the transfer of the parcel is causing the need for this variance and will not have an impact on the character of the neighborhood. Or there's no evidence that there will be a negative impact on the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood. Five. The requi- of the requested variance is not substantial in that the applicant and the school district of Brighton. Will now share, is it parking space? Is that what you're saying, Rick?
I just say egress and parking.
She will now share egress and parking. Conditions, the variance applies only to the lot line variant described in the application and testimony provided. And will not apply to future projects.
By the, a second, Heather.
Heather.
Okay. Kathleen, did you, I'm sorry to do this again, did you mention in your applicant, in your motion? That the benefit cannot reasonably be achieved by another method or something along those lines?
It didn't because I wasn't sure how, I originally had it in and I reworked it like three times this afternoon because. It was very complicated at one point, then I made it really short, then I expanded it out and I took that out because I was, I know it's a required finding. But I wasn't sure. When it's coming up with a. Transfer, how one work that back in. Um, so I am open to any suggestion that somebody has to add a number six.
Judy, what was your finding? Cause you did have one about it not being the, um, it being the. Not being reasonably achieved by another method or being the least variance necessary.
Um.
I think you had something that.
I just talked about the fact, but why it was being requested with the two, oh, and it. And it couldn't meet the, the minimum one hundred. The next was the lot adjustment is just a result of the parcel of the church being transferred. And then the layout is the minimum variance. Is it allows the school district and church to have maintenance of the parcel and no changes in the area and then.
Yeah, that.
Oh, that one? No changes? Do you want me to, okay, no changes in use for this parcel are proposed at this time. Therefore, the variance will not produce any visual change to the area.
No, the sentence before is when you said, um, it's the, you said something about it being the minimum necessary.
The layout is the minimum variance as it allows the school district and the church to have maintenance access to the parcel. Is that the one?
I, I think, I, I don't know if, if Ken, if you have something, but I, I think we need to say something like. This variance is the minimum necessary in order to allow the transfer of the property. And provide cross access and parking, something like that. I, Ken, if you have any other suggestion on it.
You might want to say cross access and parking may only, can only be achieved by the, by this variance. By the granting of this variance.
Right, so I would suggest. Language along the lines of. The. Cross access easement and. Benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved in any other method. Other than the variance requested. Which, and no other variance would be feasible for the applicant to pursue. Other than the area variance requested.
Is that good?
I accept that change.
And then Holly, did you get that as a, uh, the, the last number of the findings?
Yeah.
Okay, and you're good with that Heather, that change? Okay.
The motion.
Any comments? Oh, any comments on the motion as amended?
Thank you, Ken.
Hearing none, thank you, Rick, go ahead.
Motion is to approve with conditions, Mister Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mister Di Augustine.
Hey.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, so our next.
Dennis is never gonna let me uh run it anymore, sorry.
I think you did a fine job, thanks.
I mean, au contraire, if you identify findings that aren't on the record that we need to make, I think. Pretty killer job, actually.
Alright, alright. Don't get her head too swelled up here, okay?
Going for your job, Dennis, look at.
Yeah, I'm feeling the noose tightening, yeah, between the parliamentarian and the.
Andrea is, Andrea is looking for that big, that big uh chair.
Yeah, right, yeah, okay, I'm, I wanna know what the parliamentarian hat is, maybe you could wear one.
It looks a lot like a dunce hat.
No comment, okay. Alright, we won't start the lawyer jokes now, there's too many of them. Okay, how about six, Ken Park? What do you think?
I will start off just by saying, this is exactly the situation we wanted to avoid when we created the very, the um. The um regulations in the code.
Yeah.
Uh, that's all I'm gonna say, this is exactly what we didn't want to happen.
However, this is an unusual neighborhood where everything is really tight. I mean, it's the only neighborhood that has back alleys that, you know, constrict, what can happen.
Well, the back alleys are not a street. I mean, they're, they're, they're not a dedicated street. Um, I don't know if they're really considered a front yard.
That's, that's not a subject really particularly before the board as to whether those are dedicated.
Right, right, yeah, I think we can stay.
I don't know if they would be, I'm saying, I don't know if they, that would be considered a front yard, that's what it that way.
Well, right, yeah, it's relevant because it's whether it's in the rear, right? And if it's a fancy alleyway, it would be in the rear.
But we shouldn't base our, we shouldn't base our determination on.
No.
The status of.
Yeah.
They said that they were willing to locate it to a place where they wouldn't need a variance?
No.
No, they said that they were, they were willing to locate it to the part of side.
I think, I think what was said was the gentleman. I think, I think what was said was the gentleman said, he suggested a location that wouldn't, but she was not in favor of that. Meaning the app, the, you know, the homeowner. And so that's why, cause then he talked about, well, if you put it there, you have to put bollards and other kinds of things and, and their mutual determination was it was more visible. So that's why they selected the other location.
Yeah.
Cause they felt the town wouldn't approve it.
And this is about the only, one of the only places where they could put it would be, they could put it without needing a variance, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, in the rear, which is technically on either side of the garage section that juts out.
And, and I just, I just wanna note, um, so that we're all aware of it, um, that Jeff Carlucci, the representative, the contractor who is still listening in, um, uh, I don't think understands quite our process. But the public hearing is closed. He has raised his hand as if he thinks.
Right. Yeah, we can't.
And.
Grandma.
Okay. And, and I just wanna make sure that, um, Mr. Carlucci is hearing me when I'm speaking, uh, for the board that, um, his time to speak is over. And this is the time only for the board to discuss.
Right, right. Unless, yeah. And really, the only time we vary is if we have some confusion that we want corrected, but other than that, we don't accept any other comments, right? Correct. Okay. All right. So let's, let's proceed. Go ahead, Heather.
I still have a question. So, okay. So is that, yes, it's correct that on either side of that jutting out garage would be where no variance is required. Obviously, the testimony is that the applicant to the left side in that image that we saw looking head on at the garage to the left side, she wants to build an addition, which is why she doesn't want it on that side. On the right side, we saw a window and a bush, but technically that would be permitted without a variance. Is that right?
I don't think so. That right side is technically facing Cardiff, which is a, a public right of way, which would be a front yard. So you wouldn't be able to do that without a variance.
Well, I don't mean, I don't mean over on the side. I mean back behind where the garage and driveway are.
But I don't think they put a generator where there's glass or like a window or a door, right?
Well, he said that it'd have to be five feet off.
Five feet away.
Because there's no window. But he didn't say that it can't go there.
Rick, um, I'm gonna ask for your backup on this, but I believe the only place on that property that a generator could be placed without a variance will be in the carved out alcove area where she plans to build her addition.
And then.
Yeah, and I, and I was kind of not clear on exactly where she plans to fulfill this addition, but yes, it would be that one picture we saw of the driveway to the right of the driveway. Um, where there's an alcove behind the front corner of the house that faces Cardiff. So it'd have to be behind that front corner of the house. Backing up closer to where the garage slash driveway.
You're saying then in front of the window and near where those bushes are?
Yes. Yes, that would be not, a variance would not be required.
Yeah, as long as it didn't go past the edge of the house, right? On the Cardiff side, right?
Right.
And the testimony was that although she hasn't decided exactly what she wants to do with her addition, the general area of the addition is the area that Mr. Carlucci indicated by dotting out the corner of that property that contains that alcove area, um, is the general area that that addition was going to be placed.
And this is where I'm confused because if you look at an aerial, there is a roof that goes from the edge of the driveway all the way to that property line with fourteen towards that, you know, in, in the confines of the house.
Is the area part of the.
Dashed out area is, there's already a roof there. So I'm not sure. Uh, uh, I'm not sure where, that's why I was confused on where this addition was going to be proposed.
I couldn't tell you because I didn't see that.
Yes. Yeah, I think that roof does go, but I'm not sure it goes all the way to the end, Rick.
According to the aerial, I'm looking at an aerial photography. According to that, it does. It goes right to the end of the house.
Okay. Well, kinda where we're getting trapped here is something that we generally try not to do. I mean, if we don't like this location, we could certainly request another location. But, uh, for us to design it or figure it out is not our responsibility.
Right, right.
So real quick, this application was mine for drafting and I could not draft the statement that this variance will not be a detriment to nearby properties, given that it is less than ten feet from the neighboring house and given that the the sound decibels of a generator, I do believe that placing it, I understand it's an incredibly, um, unique lot with, with the, it's being a corner lot and, and the closeness of the houses, but I I absolutely believe that if this application came on that Cardiff side, uh, closer and was well shielded with vegetation and screening that we could find it won't be a detriment and that it's the least variance that's necessary in order to accomplish their goals of having a generator. So my opinion is to either deny it, which I think based on what's submitted, or table it and request them, request the applicant to consider alternative locations that are less detrimental to neighbors, but are still shielded from public rights of way. Uh, that, that would be my thought.
I'm inclined to agree. The only thing that I wanna say to play devil's advocate is there is testimony that that neighbor said they're fine with it, but I just don't know if they understand the.
Yeah, I think the important thing there, and Rick raised it, was that I'm not sure the neighbor, it really has a grasp of, even though the unit meets the town's requirements, just how loud it's gonna be that close and the sort of tunnel effect that I brought up also, whether the exhaust goes out the back or not, it, it's still very tight in there. So.
Hey, Rick, Rick, if we deny this versus tabling it and they wanted to come in for another variance, they'd have to pay another fee and everything else, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
But if we table it, they could come in and amend it and I have to pay another fee.
Right, but my problem with tabling it, it's, uh, if you table it and ask for a different location, you're under a whole separate set of variances. You're no longer asking for it to be in a side yard. You're asking for it to be in a front yard. Now you have neighbors who are across the street that might have issues with it. Um, they have to be notified. It should be, you know, usually once something's tabled, we don't re notify neighbors. Um, so.
Okay.
See, there'd be, it's not like, it's not like we're gonna ask for a side setback. We're still asking for a side setback, but maybe not as great as what we're debating. This is gonna be a totally different location for the generator, a totally different variance request.
There's one other, there is one other effect of denying it versus tabling it, and that is when it would be heard again by the board. Um, tabling it, it could be taken back up at the next meeting in May. Um, denying it and asking them to reapply, they're not gonna make the May meeting.
Yes, they could, Ken. Next Tuesday, next Tuesday is the cutoff for the May meeting.
But you think they could get all of their, their application together and get the, the information from the neighbors and get letters in from the neighbors by then?
Well, let's, let's just say this.
Let's just say it would be a challenge.
No, but, uh, listen, I have people who do applications in a day and get them in.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't see, I don't, I don't necessarily have to have letters in from the applicants or from the neighbors the day that they submit the application. Um, I think putting together an application would be fairly straightforward that could be, could be accomplished by next Tuesday.
Right.
Well, it sounds like the question is, are the, would the rules allow us to table for something this big of a change? And I don't.
I, I tend to agree with Rick that the cleaner way to do this is deny what has been presented and leave it up to the homeowner as to what, if anything, they wanna re-present to the board.
But that would mean another fee, right?
Yes, but, you know, I, I, so I, I think there was the, you know, this whole thing about the possibility of an addition. We don't really know exactly where that was gonna go and whether or not that could help their their case here. I, I, you know, it was, wasn't real clear.
And then, and then that the, the possibility of addition starts creating the whole issue of well, what, whether they need this variance, whether the they're creating their own hardship. Uh, the self creating hardship.
Yeah, but that's not, but that's not a strict requirement for.
No, but it's a factor that can be. Yeah.
Okay.
I think if we want clarification on this proposed, uh, uh, addition, then that's a perfect reason to table it. As opposed to a new application.
Mm-hmm. But I'm never, I'm never voting yes to it next to this.
Hold on, one person at a time.
Okay.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I would say, I, I, I don't, they can submit anything they want about the potential addition. They can submit uh, for a building permit for that addition tomorrow or variance for it. I am not in favor of putting this generator ten feet from the residential property that, so.
I'm, I'm just gonna suggest then that Andrea, since I think this is your matter, why don't you put forth a motion that you are comfortable with, whether it's to approve or deny? And see if you get a second, then we can finish having the discussion and take a vote. Or if somebody can bring on a motion to table after you make your motion.
Right. That sounds fine.
Very quickly, though, I just wanna say that you're saying ten feet. The testimony was that the generator is five feet from the applicant's house, three to four feet from the lot line and plus ten feet at best to the neighboring house.
Right, yeah. And I, I tried to measure it on Google Earth and I do think it probably would be about ten feet from the neighboring house.
I think that's about right. The guy guessed. He, he didn't measure it, so.
Hey, Dennis, you have both Kathleen and Holly with raised hands.
Okay, well.
I'm just having trouble. You guys keep jumping in on each other and I'm, I, I can't get to my mute fast enough to try to.
Okay.
Slow you guys down a little bit. Sorry. That's all I had.
Okay. All right. So, well, let's, let's proceed with what Ken's suggesting, cause we're, we're going left and right and all over the place. So how about a motion, Andrea, and then we can react to it, okay?
I'd like to see what Kathleen has to say before I make the motion.
Andrea, I just wanted to say that I support you in what you stated, that you could not approve this as is. Um, no matter how they come back and no matter what they show with the addition, that it's just too close to the other home. That's what had given me pause about this. I just I, I, even though the neighbor said that she consented, I just thought it, it's, it's not a, it's not a good situation for them. So to me, that, that was, that was key. And so I don't know, um, I'm okay with denying the application and with the idea that they would be able to submit something very quickly and spend Friday and the weekend and Monday and getting that in. Um, or whether it's um, the kind of the more convoluted tabling where they're gonna be submitting something totally different.
Okay. So here, here is my motion. Uh, I move to deny application for a dash eleven dash twenty-two, et cetera. All as described in the application and plans on file based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the granting of the requested variance will produce a detriment to nearby properties due to the fact that the generator is proposed to be placed approximately three to four feet from the side setback line and what appears to be approximately ten feet from the nearest residential home. Number two, the benefit sought by the applicant can reasonably be achieved by placing the generator in another location that while it may require a variance, will be a variance that is less of a detriment to nearby properties.
Second.
Okay. So are we comfortable with this? And, you know, I, I clearly, we certainly considered the financial part of it and all that, but it, it really doesn't seem to be any other way around this to you know, the tabling just, I think would be just too confusing. So this seems to be a legitimate motion.
And um, before we vote, if the applicant is listening, I think we're all open to a, a potential other location.
Well, they have a way to do that, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, cause it, you know, the application just needs to be substantially different. So if they pick a different location, it clearly would be substantially different than the application that we denied.
Right. So my question is you're saying no to this location and you've offered that there could be another one. Um, how, how is the board gonna feel with the other locations from, you know, suggested?
I don't think.
Are we being fair in you know, from that angle?
I think Judy, what we have to do is we have to look at what's submitted to us, what type of mitigation is proposed and take that application on, on its face value. Um, there's no guarantees ever that an application is gonna be approved.
Well, I can understand that for a first one, but this would be like a second one in a way for the same, you know, purpose. But, so that's why, to me, it's a little different.
Right. And I don't think we can, we can ever guarantee anything other than a fair review by this board.
Yeah, sure. And I think also, you know, if they were to contact Rick, Rick could provide any, you know, clarifications or unnecessary suggestions, but you know, uh, you know, to try to come up with something that could potentially work. I'm sure he would participate. I'll speak for you, Rick, but I know you always do so.
Plus, um, Judy, to your point, uh, the decision could be made to put it in the alcove to abandon the idea of an addition and that would not even require a variance. So.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other?
Should I call the roll?
I think you can.
Ms. McKay Drury.
Yes.
Mr. Mites.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. D Augustine.
Babe.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Mr. Primo.
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
The motion to deny carries.
Okay. Very good. All right. So our last application is Hampshire Drive. Thoughts there? Anyone have any concerns about that? The garage? Deteriorating corner of the garage, I guess.
It's fine.
That's the neighborhood where, where the the homeowners have found lots of ways to, to find more space in their, you know, in their home.
All right.
I only thought on this one was just that, you know, we had other applications that were saying twenty feet is sufficient, but I feel like there's adequate testimony for why twenty-two feet, um, is the, the amount that would satisfy this applicant's needs. So.
And when you stand in his driveway, the house to his right is identical to what he wants to do. I mean, it's, you know.
Yeah. Probably where he got the idea.
Maybe so.
All right.
I move that we approve application for a twelve twenty-two to allow a garage addition to extend approximately two point five feet uh, into the seven point five foot side setback required by code based on the following findings of fact. One, the proposed variance would not create a substantial change to the neighborhood. Uh, per the photo provided by the applicant, the property to the north, uh, one oh five Hampshire Drive has the same setup of the garage protrude southward along the side lot line further than the house. And garage is big enough to fit, uh, modern vehicles, including vans, uh, like the owner has are routinely added in this neighborhood. Two, the difficulty necessitating the variance can't be solved in another manner, not involving this variance. If the garage is shifted two feet to the north, the homeowners will lose the entire window in their mudroom and, uh, turning into the first bay in the garage will be extremely difficult. The only other option. The only other option would be a twenty-foot garage rather than a twenty-two-foot garage, which would not fit their vehicles inside. And um. Their other uh, request for adequate storage space. Three, the requested variance is not substantial. It is only approximately two point six feet will still leave. Uh, five point one feet of side setback. Uh, for the variance is the minimum necessary to grant the relief from the difficulty. The record establishes that the twenty-two-foot garage is the minimum size to enable cars to park and storage. For this family of five. Five, the variance will not have an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And though not strictly required, the difficulty is not self-created. There are safety concerns with the existing structure and the homeowners. Uh, require more space in light of the greater size of vehicles. These days. I would uh, propose to condition the variant, one, the variance granted herein applies only to the. Uh, renovations described in the application and the testimony given. And two, all necessary building permits and architectural review board approvals must be obtained.
Second.
Okay, Rick, do is this ARB necessary?
I don't know. It's a couple of feet that would be seen. I don't know if we'll make them go to ARB or not. Uh, but it doesn't hurt to have it in there. If they don't need it, then they don't have to get it.
Okay, very good. All right, uh, any other comments? Okay, Rick.
Judy, you had the second, correct?
Yes, I did.
The motion is to approve with conditions, Mr. De Augustine. Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. McKay Drury?
Yes.
Most to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Matt, for uh, joining and listening and. Next month, um, you know, you won't probably get cases to actually do, but you can participate obviously in the voting and. Hopefully you'll be comfortable to do so. Okay. Thanks. Right.
Everybody good, everybody good for next month, May fourth? Any um, except for Heather's possibility, any vacations or anything? No?
So do we know if it's. Great, be by Zoom again or?
We do not know.
Fifteenth is the next uh, announcement by the governor. I bet that since the way things are ticking up, that we'll probably be sitting here looking at each other on the computer screen again next month. But maybe we'll be wrong.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, everybody.
Everybody, thank you, Holly.
Bye-bye.
Thank you all of you.
Russ, can you?
Yeah, hey, Matt, if you have any questions or anything, you wanna?